Good morning. On the call to Thursday, July twenty-fifth, County Commissioner meeting to order. Vice Chairman Shores has the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Please bow your heads with me. Most have a gracious God. Lord, we thank you for this day. Father, we thank you for the ability to come together and do the will of the people. Lord, we ask you to give us the sermon. And we ask you, Lord, that the things and the decisions that we would make today would be in accordance with your will and your guidance. Father, we ask that you would watch over this nation. We ask, Lord, that as things go through the changes, Lord, we just pray, God, that you would implement and put things in order that would be in accordance with your will and your guidance. Father, good with us now as we continue out this meeting as we try to do everything in your holy name we pray, and all God's people see it.
Amen.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Shores, thank you. Going to recognition, recognition of veterans, Commissioner Shores, if you can handle that.
Do we have any veterans in the audience today? Any veterans at all?
All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Lexington.
Mr. Chairman, with regards to recognition, it's not over here, but I think it's worthy that citizens should know that we do have a new DMV office here in Lexington to serve our citizens.
Amen.
And I just thought we ought to make that aware, people aware of that.
Okay. Recognition, Morgan Brinkle, Lexington Chamber of Commerce, is Morgan here?
She was supposed to be here. I just talked to her yesterday.
Okay, something must've come up this morning. All right, we need a motion, I guess, to excuse Commissioner Mazzello and Commissioner McClure.
So moved.
I've not heard anything back from him. I need to answer his name.
So moved.
Okay, so we have a motion. And a second, all in favor? Register for public address, if you hadn't done so, there's a sheet right up here, you can register for public address, feel free to do that. We'll have public address shortly. Adoption of the agenda, Mr. Smith has asked approval of consent to assignment of solar lease option agreement be added to the consent agenda as agenda item eight A H. Human Resources asks that a closed session for attorney-client be added to the agenda. The closed session for economic development needs to be removed from the agenda. Ms. Harris has requested the agenda item nine I, continued discussion on NCACC legislative goals be continued to August twelfth meeting. Are there any other changes to the agenda?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if this is appropriate, but I like this solar thing being moved to, uh, deliberation because I don't know anything about it.
I was about to say, I can go ahead and explain that now if you want to.
Okay.
In Mr. Shale's motion there, you can decide whether you want to move to deliberation. It's pretty simple. Part of buying the Frank's property, you guys remember, there's a lease arrangement with the Frank's family and a solar panel company already on twenty-seven acres that runs through, it's got one more year left on its term through July twenty-twenty-five. I'm actually asking their attorney now how much lease payments the Frank's family receives from that. When we close on that property, hopefully here at the end of July, we will inherit that lease. So that's essentially what this agreement says, is that we will inherit that lease. There was some talk of them wanting to negotiate with us. We told them, we will not negotiate now while we're buying, we'll do that again, we'll talk about that in good faith later. So basically, Michelle, all we're doing is accepting that lease, and those lease payments will come over to us at the day of close, they stop going to the Frank family, and then they come to us.
And we have the option next year to renew or not.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. That's simply all that document states. So you guys can decide if you want to move it. I just put it on consent because at that point I did not, you know, let you guys know a little bit more about it. I knew you knew about the solar farm, and again, nothing's been built out there to date. So it's just nothing there.
I'm good with that. Today's agenda, okay, so we have a motion and a second, all approval of the agenda? Any opposed?
Who made the motion in the second? I'm sorry.
Second, Ms. Watford.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll do it.
Steve made the motion.
Okay. Chairman Yates, ma'am, I have a corner privilege.
Yes, ma'am, go right ahead.
I would just like to say, as a member of the Parks and Recreation Committee, to say a huge thank you to the Parks and Recreation Department for their excellent fireworks show this year. I've, this was the third year, and I have not attended because we live so close, and I still have grandchildren that want to play with fireworks at our house. So today, this year, I had the privilege of going, being there, and working with one of the bouncy houses. It was just a delightful day. I saw so much joy in the community's enjoyment of the park, and so many people come together within this department. I was just amazed at how organized it is and how many of our Parks and Recreation Department work this beautiful event. And I'm so appreciative, I so enjoyed working with little four, five, and six-year-olds going in and out of the bouncy house. They were delightful, reminded me of my teaching days and how much I love children. So I just wanted to say thank you to Thomas, to the department, to the other people, Commissioner Shores was there, thanked them as well. I just wanted to publicly say, if any of you have not been to the show, you need to take the time to go, and encourage any of your people that you work with. I was encouraging some of the girls at one of the banks that I go to, you know, she was asking, what am I doing? And I told her what I was doing that day, and she started coming the first year. And so I just think it's a wonderful opportunity for the community. Thank you for, thank you for the privilege to speak.
Very good. Mr. Shores, would you like to say something? I know you was there too.
Really and truly, I can't say any more than Commissioner Watford did, but I will tell you this, I don't think there's a thirty, you correct me if I'm wrong, Thomas, I don't think there's a thirty-seven-minute fireworks show anywhere in the state of North Carolina that's any better. It is absolutely phenomenal, and I had many, many, many people come up to me and tell me how wonderful it was, how much they appreciate it. Thomas, I've kind of told you on Facebook, but I'm telling you in person, please, you and your staff know how much that I appreciate them and all the hard work.
Interested to know how many people attend to that?
Fifty-six hundred, Thomas? Fifty-six, fifty-seven hundred?
Fifty-seven, that's a lot.
That's amazing.
That's a lot of joy.
And Thomas's people was able to open up three additional parking areas back in behind that the county purchased, so we were able, instead of having to utilize other people's property and stuff like that to park, we were able to get everybody in our own park. So it was amazing. Good job, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, should I say something? So I was down at Merle's Inlet watching the fireworks down there, but from what I've heard, you could probably see ours from down there too. You know, thanking you on a different matter, everybody here knows my son is disabled, and I have heard through the community that the camp that you had, the inclusive camp that allowed children with disabilities to come, and staff took care of normal kids alongside of kids with disabilities, and you put that camp on, I think that is A-one, and I appreciate you doing that for all the kids. That means a lot to me. Thank you, sir.
So, Thomas, you get to keep your job for another year, okay? Thank you for what you do and your crew, okay? Public address, anybody signed up for public address?
Yes, sir, we have three people.
Three people. Katie Gusk, Gusky, yep.
Thank you. My name is Katie, just have a little high rock lake between the Addis Creek and Holloway and Park. And I appreciate this time to come share, and I'm trying to admit that the three minutes I'm gonna read, so I didn't really get it in. I just want to talk about some problems regarding mainly wake boats and what they're doing to property and environment down there. They're very destructive to the property. This area of the lakes I live on is the widest, longest stretch of Addis Creek, and I understand why the wake boats are there, place that can go back and forth and have them not be caused on little terms. But they're destroying property docks, man, and planes. So if you're there on a Saturday, you watch your dock violently twisting off all day, very expensive to fix this stuff, and watch your tour lines be taken away also. Those weekends, we can't play in water in front of our house because it's so foul. I know when you go to the beach, you ride waves, the lake, if you do that, you're gonna hit a dock or a riprap wall or something like that, it's not the same thing. So it's tearing up property, very expensive to fix this boat. So also, if you're out on your boat and it's not a wake boat, and I don't hate people with waves, sometimes they try to destroy anything, but it's a problem. Like in our boat, if there's another wake boat, we gotta, you can't get away from the wake. I mean, that stretch of the lake is close to half a mile wide, that lake travels a whole half a mile. They have overtaken the front of our boat more than likely, so we don't let kids try to find anything, it's dangerous. So you try to, if you look there, you try to only go out when nobody's on the way to be in your boat. As I started looking into this, I discovered that there's an uproar nationwide. People are upset about wake boats everywhere. So there are a lot of lakes that have put in regulations to try and stop the damage that's happening. What I had no idea about, other than erosion, was the environmental impact. So one of the problems is, you know, these boats fill up tanks with water, it creates the waves, it creates the waves. So into their play bay, they empty that, so if they go to another lake, that tank's not really empty. So they take in water there, when they dump it, they're sending organisms from the last lake. So it's cross contamination, things that should be happening between lakes. And I know that it happens if people are putting in, they don't necessarily live at High Rock Lake, they're putting in there. Also, I learned that the amount of, they have to push down quite a bit of water forcefully to push up these waves, and in so doing, the bottoms of lakes are being destroyed. I watched video of lakes that they've scubed eyes into over the years, and it's gone from quite a bit of beautiful vegetation on the bottom and fish to nothing but dirt around. So over time, you lose your vegetation, you lose your fish. Fishermen aren't gonna be very happy, as you know, to see fish in the lake.
Three minutes, ma'am.
Oh, yeah, okay. Any questions?
I guess you Dan Nicholson?
Yes, sir, my name is Dan Nicholson. My wife Lori and I, we live two thirty-five blocks from Lane in Lexington on Addis Creek. We have owned property on High Rock Lake. I rise to support the conduct of Miss Kuschevsky. We own property on High Rock and pay taxes on High Rock since two thousand and six. And I want to address three things quickly. My dad was a Baptist preacher, so I'm gonna try to bear with me. Three things, one is safety. I like Miss Kuschevsky, we're grandparents, and I want to address safety, I want to address two, material damage, real material damage, stay in the place. And then three, what some possible solutions might be to this. From a safety perspective, you sit, and I'll leave these pictures with y'all, this is a picture of our dock, this is a Saturday morning, and there's traffic that's coming all around it. I've spoken with Sheriff Simmons, I've spoken with North Carolina Wildlife, there are no, I mean, these guys say, hey, we realize this is a problem. But there's no way I put my grandkids out and let them swim on a day like this. From my period, you can also see an accident scene from two years ago where a young twenty-year-old man drowned. Okay, so this is a real issue, and since two thousand and six, I've only seen it escalate and exacerbate. So I'm not sure what price tag we put on a life. I just, you know, I don't know that we can actually do that. I've got other pictures here that show traffic, and I really sit out on that deck on the weekends, and I'm like Stephen Katie, we don't even go out on the weekends. We sit up there, and I pray for the safety of those individuals coming around the peer systems, that we, that everybody's safe that day. The second point I'd like to get to is material damage. So when we acquired this property in October of twenty-two, we noticed a real erosion issue on our shoreline. And I've got pictures, I'll leave this, I can submit these electronically, I can leave physical copies, whichever you guys would prefer. So I obtained the necessary permitting from Q Hydro, almost two thousand dollars worth of permitting for them to study with the Army Corps of Engineers to come out and tell me what needed to be done. Well, the short answer is, there's a hundred and sixty thousand pounds of riprap that's now being, and soil barrier that's now being put on that shoreline. Okay, so that is not a cheap effort. I also had to replace the tank under our lift where our boat sits, and that contractor told me, he said, you realize this is a result of large waves crashing into your system. So what can be done? The folks at Lake Norman have figured it out. There's a hundred and fifty feet minimum, and I've got documentation there. I'm the last guy that's gonna want another law ordinance or anything of that nature, but it's not an act of God, this is fixable, and I would look for your help.
Thank you. Do you mind sharing those pictures? If you don't mind, we'll just look at them up here.
Absolutely.
And instead of you sending them electronically or whatever.
And would you, would you like a copy of the Lake Norman?
Yes.
Yes, that'd be great.
All right.
If you'll just hand them to Jason there, they'll scan them and get them to us or whatever, okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for the job that you all did.
Have a great day.
Thank you.
All right. I guess we have a Brian, this is for a rezoning for, um...
Yeah, I believe I didn't need to sign in.
No.
If you're here for the rezoning, you don't need to sign in.
Right, yep, you'll have your time.
Sorry.
Yep, okay. Yep. Thank y'all, thank y'all, have a great day. All right, moving on to a public hearing for tax incentive, seven A, for Hargit and Hargit, is that right?
Chairman, this is one of those tax incentive programs that we have with the partnership with Thomasville with their commercial district and their historic preservation program. So these folks have met the criteria and submitted for payment, and it's just under thirty-one hundred dollars. So basically, that's what the public hearing is asking for, to make the payment.
Okay, so we need to open the public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak in favor or against the public taxing grant incentive for Hargit and Hargit LLC? Anybody wishing to do so, please move forward. Seeing none, I close the public hearing, any discussion by the board? May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Let Debbie get called up there, she's over there doing some IT work.
A motion.
Yeah, a motion by Commissioner Watford and a second by Commissioner Shale.
Thank you.
To approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, public hearing for Project Sunday Economic Development Incentive Grant, seven B.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've got three of these in a row, well, not in a row, but three of these from pulling from the last meetings where we scheduled a public hearing. This one's Project Sunday, sixty-five, just over sixty-five and a half million for three years of investment, hundred and thirteen full-time jobs, it'll equal the average or exceed the average wage in the county. The proposals for three-year incentive grant of half the tax rate, not to exceed the hundred and seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and one dollars over the life of the grant. So today is a result of calling the public hearing and conducting the public hearing to see, get public feedback on this.
Okay, I declare the public hearing open. Anybody wishing to speak in favor or against this economic incentive? Seeing none, I close the public hearing, any discussion by the board? Can I have a motion, please, to approve?
Motion.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Shores and Commissioner Elliott, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, five zero. Public hearing, item seven C, Project Atlantis B Economic Incentive.
Similar concept is Sunday. This one here, existing business out of Thomasville, looking at ninety-four million over three years, half the tax rate, the average wages will exceed or be equal to the county. We expect it to grow the tax base and grow the local economy with a three-year output for us of not to exceed two hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred dollars. This is a two-part potential project, as you guys remember, there is a second piece to this, that piece is not going forward right this second, so we'll stay on alert for that, but this piece is for the existing building in Thomasville, so.
Okay, I declare the public hearing open for the economic incentive for Project Atlantis. Anybody wishing to speak in favor or against, please come forward. Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Do I have a motion and a second to approve this economic incentive? Motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the public incentive?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five zero. I just want to say thank you to the EDC Board and the folks working in EDC that we're bringing a lot of new business to the county, so good job, and that was a good move of what we've done with the Economic Development Committee, so thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I also like to point out that these are incentive grants, they have to reach a certain goal before they receive one dime of credit on the tax valuation.
They have to meet the investment amount in the jobs.
Yep. And they gotta pay in a dollar before they get fifty cent back.
That's right.
Yep. So good point. Okay, Jason, I guess you'll have to...
Yeah, step away for a minute. Okay, yeah.
Do what now, I'm sorry? Jason?
No, no, we're good. He said he didn't need to sit here.
Oh, okay, okay.
We usually pay musical chairs.
Yeah, it's hard to get Jason out of that seat.
I know. Tougher and tougher, isn't it?
I seen he kind of bowed up when you got up.
I know. Okay, all right. Stay right. Hopefully, I'm gonna be short this morning. Good morning, Chairman Yates, Madam and fellow Commissioners. Our office has been in touch, this morning, we've got a rezoning request by Bill Barker in front of us. Our office has been in touch with Mr. Barker, and he's indicated verbally that he wants to withdraw the request. We have sent him a withdrawal form. We do not physically have the copy of the withdrawal form signed, so it's still an active, not complaint, but a rezoning request. So what I would ask the board to do is offer a motion to continue to the August twelfth. Hopefully, that'll give him time to get that withdrawal form in, and we can remove it from the docket.
Mr. Chairman? Second. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Sir, I guess you may have come for no reason at all this morning, but...
Right.
Sorry about that.
Appreciate it.
Okay, item seven E, public hearing, Project Time Machine Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The last of our three public hearings for economic development incentives. This one here is for three years, eleven million dollars, company will create twenty-six jobs that meet or exceed the average wage of the county. This is half the tax rate back for three-year period for not to exceed twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars.
All right, I declare the public hearing open. Anybody wishing to speak in favor or against? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Do I have a motion and a second to approve this Economic Development Incentive Grant?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five zero. Moving on to item A on the agenda, consent. Are there any discussion to remove anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion to approve the consent agenda, as read, Mr. Chairman. Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five zero. Moving on to item nine, proclamation. Ms. Watford, would you please read the proclamation, please?
Be happy to. This is officially declaring August twenty-twenty-four as United Way of Davidson County month. Whereas from the time of its inception in nineteen fifty-five, it's a familiar year for me, United Way of Davidson County has been strengthening our community. And whereas programs provided by United Way of Davidson County's twenty-five community partners helped to tackle some of our community's greatest challenges, including issues such as health, education, and financial stability. And whereas for sixty-nine years, United Way of Davidson County has been committed to ensuring that our children are well-educated, struggling families can achieve self-sufficiency, and our community is healthy and safe. Our most vulnerable residents are cared for, and that diversity is embraced and celebrated. Whereas for sixty-nine years, United Way of Davidson County has made a substantial impact on its community by way of a strong network of agencies, corporate partners, donors, supporters, volunteers, government entities, civic organizations, and community advocates around the cause. And whereas, it is crucial to recognize the support of the United Way of Davidson County and highlight how the funding they provided in twenty-twenty-three has made a positive impact in the lives of forty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-five community members. And whereas, together we can build a stronger community and a better future for our children. And whereas, the United Way of Davidson County's mission is bringing together community resources to identify and meet the human services needs in Davidson County through responsible leadership. And whereas, the United Way of Davidson County will begin its annual campaign on Tuesday, August the first, twenty-twenty-four. Now therefore, the Davidson County Board of Commissioners, in support of the United Way of Davidson County, does hereby proclaim that United Way of Davidson County's annual campaign be recognized and celebrated during the month of August, and encourage all Davidson County residents to look for ways to make a difference in our community. Adopted this the twenty-fifth day of July twenty-twenty-four, and I offered this as my recommendation.
Okay, is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
Motion. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That proclamation carries. Thank you, Ms. Chris, Ms. Hegy, would you like to come forward? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
I brought a small visual.
You gotta show us that poster.
Oh, that is so nice.
Good morning, Davidson County Commissioners and Staff. My name is Kristi Hegy, and I'm the President for United Way of Davidson County. I would like to sincerely thank you for recognizing the positive impact United Way has had in our community for over six decades, and for declaring August as Live United Month. As the proclamation states, it is our mission to bring together community resources to identify and meet the human service needs in Davidson County. Our superpower is uniting our community to solve problems that no one organization can address alone. I brought along a visual that highlights our work in twenty-twenty-three. As stated, we currently fund twenty-five local nonprofits. Through those programs, we were able to support forty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-five individuals in our community last year. So if you're doing the math, that's over thirty-seven percent of the population in Davidson County that was touched by a United Way-funded program. If you take into account the ripple effect of those programs, we're probably touching more like fifty percent of our population. We have big dreams for our upcoming campaign. Our goal is simple, we want to be in a position to fully fund the request of local nonprofits. This is no small feat, but we know there is strength in numbers, and with our community's support, that we can make this dream a reality. I have given each of you a copy of our annual report, as well as an invitation to participate in our fund distribution process. We would love to include you in how we distribute funds, the money's raised, to these local programs. I think the volunteers that have done this in the past typically are repeat volunteers... I think, um, the volunteers that have done this in the past typically are repeat volunteers because they find so much value, um, and joy in seeing the positive difference that these wonderful programs make in our community, so hopefully, if your schedules allow, you can join us, and thank you again for the special recognition and for all that you do for our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to carry that down, Ms. Watford?
Let's have a picture. And, and I. I know, I know, and I'd like to personally say Kristi is a fireball, she always has been, um, I would recommend that you try to go to the Oyster Roast this fall, it's a wonderful event and fundraiser, I've been there, um, my husband loves it.
Fun event, Goose and Monkey's been a wonderful partner, so that's a big part of it, remember, and we have lots of other events coming up, two golf tournaments, Mohawk, Owens and Minor, so, I mean, we're, we're all over the place trying to meet the needs, but we can't do it without our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And all of this while keeping up with that rock star daughter?
Oh, my gosh.
Who is a point guard for Appalachian State University, let's go.
All right, item nine B, Sheriff Simmons, uh, I ain't seen him in the house. Request to participate in statewide misdemeanor confinement program, is that what this is?
Yes, sir, good morning Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to, uh, present this to you this morning, uh, this comes before you, uh, at, as a request from Sheriff Simmons to enter into the state misdemeanor confinement program, as a receiving county, currently, right now, we're a sending county, and what that means is, is, uh, all one-hundred counties within the, uh, state are a sending county, I think only about sixty-eight sheriff's offices have volunteered to enter into the receiving county portion of the SMC program, state misdemeanor confinement program. So currently, right now, Davidson County is a ninety-day facility, any inmate that is sentenced to an active sentence over ninety days, we, uh, we ship that inmate out to a, either DOC, Department of Corrections, or a state misdemeanor confinement facility, and that's to cut down overcrowding within DOC, that was the state's proposal for that. Um, so currently, right now, we're just a sending county, but we're asking to enter into, uh, the program as a receiving county, and we're, we're asking to only receive five inmates to start with, so we can see if it's something that we definitely want to look at doing, and the reason why we, we considered this is because since COVID, it seems like that it's hard to get, uh, trustees to, uh, work inside the jail, we depend on our trustees a lot within the jail, uh, we currently have about fifteen trustees that we utilize throughout the day, uh, those trustees prepare nine-hundred-and-some meals a day for our, uh, inmates and our staff, they also are involved in, uh, the laundry switchouts and, uh, receiving the laundry trucks, uh, assisting Sergeant, or Ms. Corporal Perry in the laundry switchouts within the pods, uh, we also utilize one inmate that, uh, has been working with us for the past, uh, probably seven months, uh, six, seven months on renovating the jail and painting the jail and giving it the facelift that it needs and, and, um, bringing it up to the, uh, standards that the state requires as well and maintaining those standards. Um, so this, this, uh, request comes to, to only allow us to receive five, uh, inmates, and one of the benefits of receiving these inmates is these inmates get game time, so if they work seven days, they get, uh, a day off of their sentence, so they have something to gain by, by entering into this program and coming to us. Um, so from what we have, uh, learned from some of the other agencies that has, uh, entered into the program as a receiving county, they see some great benefit with that, um, with having these, uh, inmates that are willing to work and willing to knock off some of their game time, and it'd be a benefit to us because we're not getting a lot of, uh, inmates that we can use, uh, as trustees since COVID, because we depend a lot on our, uh, child support inmates, um, to work, but, uh, since COVID, it doesn't seem like we're getting as many, uh, qualified trustees, uh, as we used to, and a lot of that was the, uh, child support, but I'll be glad to answer any of your questions.
Any questions?
Well, a lot of that I would say is the fact that the courts, everybody got, uh, we got a revolving door system down there, and you're dealing with the population that you have now, are you telling me that you're under, under, uh, uh, your population is under what you need, needed to be, and you want more brought in from other counties and we're gonna feed them?
So currently, right now, um, since Judge Terry has implemented a H and I court, we've actually seen our numbers reduce from over three-hundred to the, to the, uh, state allowance of two-ninety-three. Right now, we, I just checked this morning, we were at two-eighty-five, which that number fluctuates, Commissioner, as I'm sure you're quite aware of, um, it can fluctuate within two weeks, I mean, we can be over three-hundred, we can be over three-hundred in three or four days. Um, the, the benefit that we are receiving from that, I believe, offsets that, um, as far as having these inmates that we can depend on for road squad. To assist out here in the public, uh, mowing, weed-eating, some of the facilities, Quantico County Camp, uh, the, uh, Pollock, uh, the, uh, Davidson, uh, building out there, uh, right behind the sheriff's office that, that helps those with, uh, disabilities and challenges, um, you know, it's, it's a great benefit to the road squad program, also to the, the trustees that's needed within the facility to run the facility, because we don't have enough contracted people working for air mark to provide the food, we depend on our inmates, um, and if you don't have, uh, trustees to prepare those meals, then we're gonna have to look at other, other, uh, uh, ways to prepare those meals for the inmates.
But, the, the only problem I've got with it, Major, is this, we're letting all of our, the peoples that's been arrested, law enforcement's getting just completely frustrated by the fact they carry people and they walk out the door, that's the reason you don't have the inmates that you need, is because they're out the door now, they walk in, they go right back out, I guarantee you, there's not anybody probably within your department or within the judge's department, they can tell you how many outstanding orders for arrest are out there, there's thousands. They don't care if they go to court or not, it's getting to the point of being ridiculous for miles, well, be in New York and, or California, the way this county's turning out to be. And, and we want more and more, and now you wanting to bring in people from more conservative counties than ours and house their inmates that they refuse to let go, and it's, it's wrong. It's, I mean, it's a wrong approach, I'm not saying that you guys are doing anything wrong, I'm saying it's a wrong approach, but we seem to get further, further, further down the road where a, a path we don't need to be on, but we are on, and it's not your fault, you're the arresting agency, you don't make a determination as to whether or not they, they're gonna go to jail or not. And, oh, orders of arrest are just growing by massive amounts, and when the public comes to light, when it comes to light, how many outstanding orders for arrest, somebody's gonna pay the price, and, and there's, that's been accumulated right now, and, and so, the problem I've got is we want to take somebody else's people, but we want to let our people, the people that do, uh, crimes in this county go, doesn't make any sense, it just doesn't make any sense.
Well, Commissioners, you just stated, I'm not, I'm not involved in whether or not a person is released.
I know, I know, and I pointed that out.
Our job is to make sure that we receive that inmate, as the court orders us to receive that inmate, house that inmate, make sure that inmate's needs are met, what I'm trying to do is make sure that our facility runs accordingly, and what we currently have is a hard time finding inmates that have low bonds, that are not an escape risk, are not assault of in nature, uh, that we can, I hate to use this word, I'm gonna use this word loosely, trust them to be able to come in and do a job. Um, a lot of these inmates are willing to do that, simply so they're out of the cell, uh, working, and it passes their time by quickly, um, so we're very thankful that we have inmates that's willing to do that, because if we didn't, we would be in trouble, um, as I said, we got nine-hundred meals a day that we have to prepare.
But you're talking about inmates that's already been convicted, correct?
So, these inmates would, they've already been convicted, so they've been sentenced for, to ninety days or more, so we could house up to one year, uh, if we get a DWI conviction, they sentence them up to one year or even two years at some point in time, um, but these inmates have something to, to lose, okay? Um, they also have something to gain, uh, so if they, if they go out and they work and they don't call it a problem, then they get that game time, they get twenty-four hours off or a day off of their sentence every seven days, so they can get back out to their families quicker. So, I, I only see it as a plus for them, and that's the way a lot of them view it, we can't give them that game time until they're sentenced, and so currently, right now, the only benefit that our inmates have is they're just out of their sails or out of the pods, you know, for, you know, four, six hours a time.
And you just, you want to start out with five?
I only want to start out with five, the good benefit to this is, is, uh, obviously, we get inmate labor, which is, which is great, but we get forty dollars a day in reimbursement, um, so, right now, currently, it costs us forty-six to sixty-three dollars a day to house an inmate, okay? But, and yes, it seems like we may be going a little bit in the hole by looking at numbers on paper, however, the benefit that we get with that labor offsets that, okay? We're not having to increase our contracted services to have more full-time employees to prepare meals, because we don't have inmates to prepare the meals, so yes, it looks like where it's costing us six dollars a day, however, the benefit and the labor that we're getting from those inmates, that one inmate, offsets that, does that make sense?
Yeah, and the, the number of inmates that you got determines the cost per day.
Yes.
It's not, it's not a fixed number.
To, to a degree.
And if you add those five, you're raising it, and so it's gonna decrease the cost per day of, of what you got there.
Yes, sir, to, to a degree, yes, sir.
Are you talking about like the old six-oh-six program?
Yes.
That, uh, cause they used to wash the, the, the vehicles and everything, we would take the technician trucks over there when they had the ability, when they were mowing grass, and they would wash some of our, uh, technician trucks and kind of do that, and, you know, uh.
Yeah, and, and Commissioner, we still have that program.
Okay.
We still have a detention officer that goes out and works inmates, but when you see that detention officer, he only has one, maybe two, when I first started.
It was like ten, twelve, thirteen?
I had, I had six to seven inmates that I was working a day, I worked juveniles on Saturday for a community service program, and I worked the inmates Tuesday through Friday, and we mowed, we walked one-oh-nine, I don't know how many miles I walked down one-oh-nine picking up trash.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, but those days of seeing that amount of inmates come in has not been there.
That's reflecting what Commissioner Shale was talking about.
That, that's correct, so we, we see a great benefit if we have these inmates, and we only want to start with five, we don't want to jump in the deep end, get over our head, and this is something that we can, we can pull out at any time, it's not a year contractual basis, we just tell them, we no longer want to be a receiving county. Um, now, one of the concerns that I had was, this is a couple that I've looked into, um, how long do we have to house that inmate once we want to terminate the program? Well, we have to keep that inmate until that, um, sentence is expired, okay? But we don't have to receive anymore, okay, and that's fair enough. Um, also, if that inmate is entered into a MAP program at another facility, uh, that may offer some type of a medication that we're currently offering, do we have to accommodate that? And in speaking with, uh, Courtney Goodwin, uh, with the state misdemeanor confinement program, he advised that would not be the case, they have to, uh, have the opportunity to come into our MAP program and, and roll in it, and, uh, as you know, take a vivitrol shot, I didn't want to get in a position where we had to transport people out, um, of the facility, which is what we were wanting to get away from for security reasons and cost reasons, um, so they advised that they would, uh, have to come into our program and accept our program, if not, then they could decline it, but that'd be on them, that's some of the things that I personally checked out.
Mr. Shores, go ahead.
Major, I just got a couple of questions, uh, you answered one of them already about the fact that the state will be paying us, uh, to house these, and I understand that they're also doing work for us, uh, but one of my other questions is, I know you and the sheriff have been here asking for additional people because of staffing issues, do we have the proper staffing to do this, or are we gonna have to hire more people to, to handle this?
It's not gonna be any more taxing on our, on our staff as it, as it is right now, um, the state allows our road squad guy to supervise up to six inmates at one time, right now, he's supervising one, okay, he's supervising one, so we can add five there and it's no, not, not that big of an issue. Um, we're not planning to put them all on road squad, we're looking at making sure the facility runs, and that's where, that's where the problem is, we gotta have those for, for the kitchen. Currently, right now, we don't have a kitchen officer, um, which is something that we, we need, uh, hopefully, in the future, uh, we can, we can, um, be in a position to have that, uh, to make sure that the meals are out accordingly, right now, we have to lean on the air mark staff, but to answer your question, no, uh, because we can add one more to laundry, to assist, we can add a couple more to help within the facility, um, to make sure the renovations are there, uh, and, and everything is met, so to answer your question, no.
Okay, no further questions.
Okay, I got a couple of questions, um, so is this like a program, they, they actually, all these workers that you're gonna be bringing in, they're part of a program that they know, uh, if they come to Davidson County, they're gonna be working, is that, is that how this works?
That is correct.
Okay, so you just kind of tell them what you need, a cook, or, and, and they volunteer to come here?
That's correct.
Yeah, what, uh, insurance, do we cover the insurance on them, or is that covered by state, so?
So, if they go outside the facility, that's a good question, Commissioners, if they go outside the facility, because concern that I had, they go outside the facility, then since they are, um, an inmate that belongs to the state, the state picks up that medical expense.
All the healthcare, whatever is coming.
The only medical expense that, uh, the county would have to accrue, or accrue would simply be what's in-house, okay, you know, like Tylenol or some type of over-counter medication, things of that nature, that we can treat them in-house, but if they have to go out, then the state picks up that bill. We have a form that we have to submit to the state, we also get reimbursed for, um, supervising or the security of that inmate while we are, uh, while they're outside the facility as well, and also mileage.
Okay, I wanted to make sure we wasn't on the hook, our taxpayers weren't on the hook for that. Um, that was another question I had too, man, it just slipped my mind. Oh, yeah, um, who is in charge, in other words, if they gotta work seven days just to get one day off, I get why you don't have any volunteers to work, I mean, if they work, um, you know, fifty-two weeks a year, they don't get many days off, you know, off their sentence, so who's in charge of that?
Calculating the time.
Well, now, who's, who's in charge of changing that, maybe they should get two days off for every week they work, or two and a half days, I mean, I get it why nobody wants to work, I mean, that's not very much of an incentive to, to get them to want to work.
That, that's simply something that the legislator would have to.
Legislator?
Yeah.
That's legislation?
Do that.
Okay, because that may be something we need to talk about, again, if you got two.
Legislative goals coming up, so, yeah.
You got two-hundred-and-eighty-five people and you can't get enough people out of that, I mean, that tells me the incentive is just not there for them to work, you know?
Well, remember that this is only for people that are not, that have not been sentenced, don't get game time. Only those that's been convicted and sentenced will begin to start accruing the game time.
I got you.
That's the reason why we can't get those within the facilities, pre-trial, to, to volunteer to, to work, so they don't, they don't get a benefit outside of just getting out of their cell, getting away from everyone and working, and as you know, when you work, you, you have some self-worth, I think it's great, um, but also it helps pass the time as well, so.
So, out of the two-eighty-five that we may have in our jail, very few of those has been sentenced and convicted?
That's correct.
Right.
That's correct, and those that have been sentenced, we're, we're looking at shipping them out.
Shipping them out, they, they don't, they don't stay very long.
To put them, yes.
I got you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
I've got one, uh, Major, these folks that you're gonna have coming in, that you're gonna have coming in, are they gonna be candidates for a vivitrol?
They very well could be.
That's gonna knock off your benefit.
That was a concern that I had.
Yeah.
Um, from, this is the reason why I asked, uh, Mr. Goodwin, uh, about the MAP program and stuff, uh, he said that typically what he tries to do, if they're in a MAP program, that they try to house them in a facility that is currently, um, on the same medication or using the same medication that. or using the same medication that inmate has been prescribed. So there's no disruption in that. Now, will it cost us more, uh, potentially, if you had someone from another county that's coming in and enrolling into the MAP program? Of course, it would cost us a little bit more as far as with the shot. Uh, I, I see where you're going there, and, and that's, that's just the reality of it.
Would, would they be responsible for paying us back that money?
The state?
Yeah.
I would imagine they would, uh, unless they're considering that as in-house medical costs.
Yeah, it's probably...
Make that forty-four dollars a day, but with, with that's fifteen hundred for the vivitrol.
Can we get a clarification on that, Major? I mean, not necessarily before we make a decision, but can you let us, or let Casey know if the state will, will pay that back?
Yeah, I can, I can inquire about that, that's not a problem. But I think that, you know, I can't see where we, we could, um, turn someone away because they are wanting to enroll in a MAP program or currently enrolled in a MAP program. I think we get what we get, if that makes sense.
I mean, that's the opioid money anyhow, correct? I mean, is that not what's paying for that, so?
Well, currently, right now, um, and you'll see this coming, um, before too long, as I sent it to, to Casey and others, we, uh, applied for a sheriff's MAP grant. Uh, two million dollars was available, uh, and I shared this with the opioid settlement committee the other, other, uh, yeah, last week. Um, two million dollars was available for the sheriff's office, only two million dollars to go, uh, amongst a hundred counties. We applied with the assistance of Sharon Pope and was able to get one million, six thousand dollars for that two million, so over half of that MAP grant.
That's amazing.
Uh, it's coming to Davidson County. I'm very excited about that. As I mentioned to Casey prior to applying for this grant, uh, I did not, I did not wanna do something without, you know, his blessings or the Commissioner's approval as well. But I, I wanted to, uh, at least try to take advantage of that grant. We got three years to use that money. So right now, we, we understand we have a million, I think one-point-two million that's been allotted for the, the, the MAP program within the jail from the opioid settlement money. Uh, we had to increase that a little bit because of, uh, peer support, if I remember correctly. Um, and I think, and I don't wanna speak for Casey, but I believe in our discussions, he said it'd be wise just to go ahead and use the MAP, the grant, uh, funds first.
That's right.
Before we use the opioid settlement money. So to answer your question, Commissioner, it still would not cost the county anything. Um, it would deplete our funds a little bit quicker, uh, there. That would've been allotted for our folks here in Davidson County. Um, but as far as initial cost to the county, it wouldn't, it wouldn't cost the county.
It just seems to me that when you mention opioid money, that county, that person came from got opioid money too, and it should follow that defendant always to our jail, and they should be responsible for paying that versus taking it away from our citizens. And, and so I think, I think those counties should be responsible, and the money should follow that, that, from that county to you. I think that money should follow, because it's their responsibility.
The flip side to that, to if one of our citizens was...
Yeah, we send, we send some to some other counties.
Yeah, we had to be responsible paying it.
Or either they pay it, one or the other.
I agree with you, but I got a hunch, it's like Major Louis said, I suspect it's considered in-house.
That's right.
Because they came in your facility, you know what I'm saying?
I'm arguing against that, I'm just...
I agree with you, they should have a way, if, if you wanted in a perfect world, you should pay coming and going, but...
But that's a lot of tracking, so if their county's gotta pay for our citizens and our citizens, so it could, but...
Let me remind you too, if that, if that is one inmate that has enrolled in the MAP program, and I, and I see your concern, Commissioner, and, and I think it's a valid concern. However, when you look at the labor that we're getting from those four, how much would it cost the county if we had to pay somebody to come in and do this service? You know, so you're looking at at least, I would say at least fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars a month just for one person to come in and do the work that these inmates are doing. So I still see that the county is still saving, okay? Because we're not having to increase, uh, full-time employees with these vendors to provide the needs within the facility, like air mark, or even contracting someone to come in, or even adding to our full-time employees to make sure that the needs are met, like another laundry officer or a full-time kitchen officer, does that make sense?
Yeah. Uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, based on five criteria that you mentioned there, I'll make a motion to...
Second, okay. I'd like to amend that, uh, motion
Okay.
to do it for one year. And Major, if you could, maybe track and see what kinda input we have coming in from other counties. It shouldn't be that hard to track these workers.
Yeah.
And just for one year, and we see how it looks, and if a year down the road, it's all nice, and it looks nice, and no issues, and we might wanna do more than five, but we do five for, for one year.
Yeah.
Second, uh...
Most, I amend the motion to...
And for clarity, when you say track them, I'm assuming you're just making sure that we are getting good qualified inmates that's working?
Yeah, right.
I just wanna make sure I understand.
Right, if they stay, or if they come here two months and don't wanna work anymore, and now we keeping them for another six months, and...
Right.
Just kinda see how the, a, a summary of how the system's working, you know?
Sure, sure, that's fair.
And, uh, y'all know if it's, it's, it's good or bad after...
The last thing I wanna do is it, it, is it hurt the county.
Right.
And, uh, cost the county more, and we're not, we're not getting worse like that. But I see this as an opportunity to gain some ground and some areas that we need in the jails.
Real quick, that agreement allows for that, right? It won't sign us up for multi-years and lock us in? We have the year-to-year out?
My understanding is we can terminate, it's not on a year basis. We can come, we can terminate it at any time.
I got you, I got you.
You have to do a...
It's evergreen to you, it's evergreen to you decide to get out?
The way I understand it, it could be whenever we decide, we give a written notice that we're wishing to terminate the, the, uh, uh, the, uh, as a receiving county, and then they don't send us anymore.
We just keep that in?
But we have to keep those inmates that we currently have received until they
You get through it all, right.
Exit the program, yes.
And that's why I'm saying, that's why you need a year to kindly weigh it out and see if it works or not, you know?
Quick question on that, if you gotta enter agreement, is that correct?
Yes, there's, there's an MOU that states...
Would that not come to our county attorney for approval before it goes out?
It, it will, it'll, it's actually gone through the routing process already, yeah.
So that you can work with the major, make sure that's...
I've already seen the glan, I just wanted to ask that question, I couldn't remember if it said, you know, some of these agreements lock you into a multi-year deal, and I, and I understand his point. They wouldn't do this for this because it's people. You know, it's not a transaction per se, it's people. If you don't wanna do it, you just send them a letter and say, "I'm out of the program."
Right.
But I didn't wanna have that juxtaposed against Mr. Chairman's motion where they, this thing says, "Oh, you're in this thing for five years no matter what." Other concern I had going into it was to make sure the sheriff has the option always to say, "I don't want no more."
Up down.
"You can't make me take them. If I don't have the space, you can't force them on me," and that appeared to be the case in the agreement as well.
I did not wanna enter into that as well. I read through the MOU and conked through it well, and I did not see that language in there, so I felt comfortable bringing it to the Commissioners for that very reason.
I reworded my motion based on the one-year contingency.
Okay, friendly motion to amend it to a one-year over a summary of how it's working. We have second.
Change.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, good job.
Thank you, thank you. And real quick, did you still wish for me to reach out to the state to find out if they were gonna reimburse for the vivitrol shot? Where's that?
The state or that county that follows the inmate?
Yeah.
Say like one of those would have to be...
I will, I will reach out to Courtney Goodwin, 'cause he manages the State and Mr. Meter Crime Program for the state, and, uh, once I find that information out, I'll send...
I feel like I know the answer, but we'll just get clarification.
Yes, I understand. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir.
All right, item nine C, Mr. Smith, create an inspection software committee.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm gonna let Jason go with this a little bit more than I can, but I'm gonna tee it up. You know, we've got a renewal in about a year on our current software system, OpenGov that we use inspections. And, um, I know from talking to some of you, there's been some, some interest in wanting to have a committee take a look at this at more ground level with some other partners, maybe even some building partners out in the community. I think Jason's done some of that preliminary work, and we got some feedback from some of those folks, so I'll let him share that with you, and then I wanna hear feedback from you all on how you wanna tackle this, um, OpenGov issue. So go ahead, Jason.
Um, yeah, like Casey said, the contract with OpenGov, we enter our last year of it, I think it's October first, if I remember correctly. Um, and there's been, there have been issues. Uh, obviously, the rollout was not the smoothest at the very beginning, but ongoing, there had been some issues that both affect contractors and affect staff and for the reporting and environmental health. Um, those concerns have been relayed multiple times to OpenGov. Um, I know Bo and Eric and his staff there have had multiple calls with them. Um, I got involved when it reached a point of we weren't getting any response. There's just no response, and as I've explained, and I've been very forthcoming with OpenGov when I got on the calls with them, if I get on a call, that's not a good thing. You know, at this point, we're taking it out of the department's hands, and county manager's involved, that means we're getting phone calls. And, and I know I've taken phone calls from some of you all with, with contractors that have expressed concerns, um, and from others as well, and from contractor, some contractors directly. Um, but over the past, I'd say, four months or so, five months, we have been meeting with OpenGov pretty regularly to have expressed those concerns. And I've put it out to them that we're coming into the last year of the contract, and if this doesn't improve, we may have to start looking at new software. Um, and they have ratcheted up their support, there's no doubt about that. They've tried, uh, to, they're much more, I think there was some staff turnover with them, there are some other issues that have gone on, but, um, they have had multiple meetings with us. I actually had a call with, uh, one of them yesterday, um, to kinda update me as to what they're doing. There's, partly, again, not to rehash all the rollout issues, there were some issues with environmental health, with getting the reporting features there that folks need, um, that they are working through that, uh, some issues with scheduling. For example, just to give you, this is a very petty thing, but it is important to Bo and them. Um, if you go in, some, uh, we'll use Christmas holidays. Some places have three days at Christmas, some people have two days at Christmas. Um, they may go in and schedule themselves for the day after Christmas to have an inspection. There's no way to block that out, so the contractor's scheduling their own stuff, they turn around, they call, um, and that's a scheduling crisis. They've gotta go through and fix everything manually after that. Um, there's a number of things like that where it's an issue. Um, so this started with me basically saying to OpenGov, "We may need to look at new software," you know? Um, if you can't improve this, we, we need to, we gotta be responsive to our citizens, our contractors, and our staff, um, and go out and do our due diligence at that point. Um, that being, like I said, that being said, we are getting some progress there. So part of this idea is, and I, like Casey said, we've had some expression of possibly having, um, not just staff working on this, but have some input from contractors and, and the public at large, um, because they're also using this. There's luxuries with OpenGov where they can go and pull their permits any time of the day. They can pay online, they can do their scheduling. So it's not just staff that's working on this, it, there are features that are important to contractors and things like that. If we do make a change, um, having that feedback from them to select the, the best software, you know, could be valuable. And then as well, um, if we stay with OpenGov, to have that as part of it. And I've communicated this with OpenGov, that this is a possibility, that this could happen, um, that we would, may have a committee, and you may not just be on a call with me anymore. There may be other people involved, so. Um, I know Bo's here, I don't know if Bo wants to add anything to, to some of the issues that you guys have had, but, uh...
I'm just tearing off myself for information, if I had any questions.
But I'll be glad to take any questions, um...
Mr. Martin, I know you and I have had extensive calls about this. Uh, and talking to the Board of Health, uh, when we're discussing trying to get stuff, we keep getting told we, we can't get this or we can't get that because our people are having to go back and manually extract that information, and that's just completely, totally unacceptable. Um, so I, I think that, uh, I think we need to do something. If, if, if OpenGov steps up to the plate and makes everything clean and whole, that may be one thing. But otherwise, I know, um, I'm not gonna speak for him, but I believe, uh, a couple of folks over there, um, I think Randy was looking at some, some other options, uh, you know, that would work cleaner with Bo and his people. Bo, will you come up here just a minute, just that way you don't have to yell back and forth? 'Cause it's my understanding, when environmental health needs to communicate with you guys, that's not jiving either, is that, as far as OpenGov, not you all, the departments, but some of the things that goes in between, between environmental health and maybe inspections, or am I wrong there?
Um, they're, they're, they probably have more in-house struggle than in working with us. There's some minor changes with us, but to the process of how the things concurrently work together, um, on what they require of the public versus it having to be cleared to come to us, there are some minor glitches that come that, that speak to that. Um, I don't have a lot I can really say on their side of it, but, but in the grand scheme of it all, that is some of it.
So those are just minor things, you say the word minor, I, I've always heard it was major, so... That's what I'd heard, it was major issues.
One of the big things I know, at least early on, and this may have been sorted out now, was if they don't have their approval from environmental health, you can't pull your building permits. Getting that communicated over, then they get out into the field, find out, "We don't like," whether you haven't finished everything with environmental health, so it sets people backwards, um...
How does that happen with a software? I mean, you know, was this a four-year contract?
I think it was...
Three years?
I thought it was three.
Okay, so we're in the last year of our contract, and we've got minute things like this that's still not taken care of. That's unacceptable. And you've got, uh, James with the Health Department on his side doing that, you've got inspections, and I'm gonna tell you, y'all's caseloads went exponentially just out the roof, okay? So trying to, trying to cover all of those, we have gotten to have a software that talks to one another, period.
Well, it sounds like it may be talking to one another, it's just maybe the information's not being put in.
Well, in a, a big...
But Bo's playing nice, he ain't gonna, he's not gonna throw anybody under the bus, and that side's not gonna throw anybody under the bus, but...
A big part of the issue here...
They're probably still gonna be using them.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and I'm gonna be as diplomatic as I can when I say this. A big part of the issue is when this was implemented, it was implemented by a single department with one department in mind, okay?
Got you.
And even that group that did the implementation did not fully understand and grasp what their own department needed to do. That's the most gentle way I can say it.
Well, and I'm gonna tell you this, and not to blame anybody, when you buy in software, a lot of the things you need, you don't realize it when you, when you first buy it.
Right, you're gonna work through kinks.
It's trial and error, I mean, I've been through several software programs, and you learn what you need as you go.
Right.
You know, if you had it all figured out, now by the time you're working on your second or third software, you know what all needs to be in there, you know? And then, and then you can work, so, but again, one of these things about this committee was somewhat my idea, I think, because again, we need some input from our, from our citizens, our, our builders, uh, you know, just the average citizen that's gonna be using these softwares, you know?
Yeah, and, and when it was implemented, again, I, I use environmental health. Environmental health had very little input at all on the front end. Um, get into it, there was, you may remember, we had the consultant there that was working with them, and that's what they focused on, was trying to get them up and running, 'cause for a long time, only inspections was working off of this.
And if I may, uh, when, when it was launched, it wa, it was launched, in my opinion, it was launched prematurely. It didn't, didn't get the chance to go through a test environment to work out those kinks, and that's where the other departments weren't included. So it was kinda all hands on deck when it got thrown out there, and many of the, the minor things, as well as some of the bigger issues, I started, when I got appointed, I started to address this right out of the gate with OpenGov, and, uh, it's probably, if I had to guess, it's like, like he mentioned, there, there showed some in-house turnaround going on with OpenGov. There was probably things we were subject to without even knowing that were going on behind the curtain with them, because we kinda kept getting the back burner until it got to the point where I suggested to, to Jason, "I need to let these people, we need, we mean business." So I, I suggested to them, I said, "If we can't get a better response from your service team, I have to recommend to my management, we, we consider our options." And that was when I went to him and we did that, and that's what kinda lit the fire under them, where things actually, we, we kinda got their attention. Now, like you said, it's late to the game, and that is, our contract's up in October. Uh, so that kinda put the pedal to the metal on them, so to say, of, you know, put up, or, or we got to figure something out. And, and that's what's kinda got us to where we're at.
And you got thrown to the wolves, I mean, right soon as you come aboard, you, you inherited somebody else's problem, so thank you.
I know, and Bo was in this meeting one week, 'cause we were down at inspections, it was Bo, Lillian, Scott Leonard, uh, myself, all of us with OpenGov. All of us with OpenGov. It was the big, I think they thought it was going to be a big feel-good kickoff type thing. And I came in and I asked a very simple question. I said, if money was no object, with the needs that we have, if we were a customer coming to you today, a new customer, can your product provide what we are asking for? And they said, not as it is right now. I said, that tells me all I need to know. I don't care about money. That's a whole other argument.
That's right.
But what they have done is they've taken that, and now they're incorporating that. And they're finding out, I think, Bo would agree, this is an issue to other places too. And they're now, they will make improvements, or they'll make changes to it, and they roll it out to the whole group, you know, to, to all their users. So they're looking at like the, what they call parent-child relationship. Put it in simpler terms, this is so, Bo, when he pulls up their building permit, they can see all the trade permits underneath that one permit.
Or a contractor.
Or the contractor can look at it and see all their subs.
Which our old system did have, not, not that that means anything. So it's not an uncommon thing we're asking for.
Right.
As far as that goes.
But wait one second, let me, I've been waiting for my spot, and this was it. You hit the nail on the head, Mr. Chairman. And so there's, there's two golden rules of pieces of software you have to remember. The more, the more you try to tailor it to your process, the more expensive it will be. If you use a canned template piece of software, you're not going to be as satisfied. So you have to trade satisfaction for cost. And that's what we've done here. Our, the system you mentioned was tailored. We spent years massaging it, massaging it, massaging it, spending more money. That's how we got idiosyncratic pieces of data out of it. Some of the stuff in environmental health, I agree with you, we need the data, but it'll be like that. It'll come out in future rollouts. But what you just said was an important piece of this. The other piece of that is, if you, the second golden rule is, if you put junk data in a fancy system, you will get junk answers out.
That's right.
I don't care how good the system is, if the data is crap, the answer will be crap. And that is not, and I'm going to tell you guys, in my 25 years of doing this, that is a lot of systems on this earth. Not just in government, in private sector as well. They just don't take the time to make sure the data is, who used the word clean a minute ago? Was it you, Mr. Chairman? Did you say clean? Somebody up there said clean.
I did.
That is the key. But it takes a human being usually inputting that information in and making sure this is clean information. Because then when the report comes out, you can trust it. You can know, this is the answer right here. Not, a lot of times what we get around here, it's one of the reasons why, you know, over the years I've spent, you know, I'm sure over the years I've brought stuff to this board and members of this board, and people, and people in the audience as well, and they go, how did you, how did you make this sheet of paper? I pulled it from a variety of systems, and that was one skill set I learned early on in my career, that no one person knew how to get all data from HR, from finance, from this and that, and put it together. So I had to spend time figuring that out, because you guys, or somebody I worked for, wanted an answer. And it was actually in an amalgamation of several places. It was impossible to do. And a report, I had to make a report. When you start doing that, it's like our budget document. For years, I've had people come to me and try to sell me a budget system. Here, I'll sell you a budget system. It'd be great, but it won't do exactly what we do. Matter of fact, it won't do a lot of what we do. Because what I do, or what we do, is so tailored to us now, it's become us. Does that make sense? And so I've kind of lived with it. Over the years, we'll have to figure out how to back off of that. I don't know how, you know what I mean? That's a game plan we'll come up with later. But somebody up there, I think it was Mr. Chairman, said that first piece, which is, it's, you know, you've got to watch the, the tailoredness of it. Because that's when the cost moves. But that data piece is key. And I think some of this maybe is part of, we got data not coming in correctly in certain spots, or some missing data. Missing data is as bad as incorrect data, you know what I mean? If you don't have it, you don't even have a baseline. It's like taking your blood at the doctor's office. If they ain't checked your blood in years, they got no baseline to know what your blood sugar is that day, you know what I mean?
And, you know, and I get it. The trouble is, we're living in a, in a technologically advanced time. So when you can, you can order your groceries, your food, get your car fixed, everything right here off your mobile phone, and you go to try to pull a simple permit, and it won't let you talk to this one or that one, or you have trouble. I can see why contractors are upset. But it, it all goes back to what you said.
Percentage wise from the contractors, Jason, now, he's a small sample size, but he's talked to several of them. I'd say, let's put a percentage on it, just for unscientificness, let's call it that. What are we, about probably 80, 90% satisfied with where we are today?
I would say so. I mean, we, we sent out a, a survey, actually, because we had the, you'll remember, we were doing email blasts when we had change down there, started to kind of get more communication out. We put that out, and there's a link on, I think when you go to pull your permit, now you can take the survey there. And Lillian organized all that. The, the survey results came back. It was about 75, 85%, somewhere in that neighborhood.
So the last little piece though, but that last 10, 15% is like he mentioned, the parent-child. The contractors would love to be able to see all them subs, because then they can manage their job right there on the thing. They're not going to come up here with pitchforks and burn the place down, because you don't have it, but it's something they'd really like to have. And so that's where we went to OpenGov and said, come on, guys, can you help us with things like this? Well, maybe in future versions.
Right.
Not today, but in future versions.
I just know that I've talked to many contractors across the state that I know, going to different things and that and the other. I've got a really good friend that I've known from the military, and he is an electrical contractor, and in the Raleigh area. And he said, when he goes to do something, it's, it's right there, Johnny on the spot, and it's perfect. He don't have to call nobody and beg for information. And the other piece of that is, because there's got to be a happy marriage between the contractors and our staff. But the, when Lillian tells me that her staff has to stop what they're doing, and go in and manually extract information, that's a problem. That's, that kills efficiency with, with everything.
I agree.
So.
Well, and one thing that came out of my meeting yesterday with OpenGov, the Zoom call I had with them, they are actually, on environmental health, to Casey's point about data, is they've determined the data is not good. So they're going through and trying to slim down their, their processes of entry. And they're actually, OpenGov, from what she told me, they're, they're actually going in and cleaning the data up. They're, they're doing that to try to get it to the point when they roll it out, they can marry all this back together. And I was impressed with that.
Our data wasn't good, is that what you're saying?
Well, the, the way the process is set up, as things are entered, it's not producing the data that you are looking for.
Right.
You know, when you get your report, like what she puts out every week. She'd like to be able to run a report. To Casey's point, I don't know that we're ever going to get to the point where you run everything. Because I, I agree with him, my experience is kind of the same from a budget background. Even with, we had budget software where I was at before, you still pull a flat file out, and you still do some of your own analysis. But to be able to have a quick canned report that addresses 90% of what you want, that would be nice.
So 10 years ago, I saw, you know, at that time, Public Works take a, a, a task that seemed like it could never be done. The fact that, you know, Davidson County is now digital with all of our files, it started in finance, started in HR, did everything. Well, Dwayne Childers started this, okay? Me and him went to NC State University for a month and a half, and, and took energy classes. And they said, there's no way that this can be done. And Dwayne said, no, you're not going to tell me that. So from one scanned piece of paper, from every scanned bill that we paid here, it automatically, you scan that in there, and it put into digital files. I knew exactly what the kilowatts for every building we had. I could actually forecast and tell you when a unit was going to go bad in a building. Because I didn't believe him at first. I called him a liar. I told him, I said, Dwayne, you're making me, you're making me do stuff I shouldn't be doing. But after we did it, he, he seemed like a genius. And they actually built Laserfish, and now it's statewide because of what we did here in Davidson County. So when I hear this, I know, I know there's something out there that can meet our need. I just don't know what. So, I mean, because, I mean, right there, what, what happened here, what we did, and now the entire state's using Laserfish.
Back to the question, Mr. Chairman, I mean, I don't, I don't like to get philosophical, but I mean, are we, are we at that? I mean, it would be nice to get a little input and start talking through some issues. I'm not sure how we approach that other than a committee.
Well, here's the deal, I mean, you know, if, if, if OpenGov can get there, then that's probably where we need to stay. Because that's the least amount of, I mean.
But I would like to hear from some, I, I, the parent-child thing maybe is just one thing. I'd love to hear some more. I'd really like to, you know, if somebody, if we could get a couple, couple guys' ears and say, I'd really like to have this and this and this, out, out of the field perspective, you know what I'm saying?
Here's the deal, I'd like to do this, hang on one second, please. I'd like to get this committee together. Like I say, get some contractors, and you already know a one.
Oh, yeah.
But I'd also like to get a new survey out on the email blasts that just pertains to this software. And we know what we need inside. I mean, staff knows what they need. They know the issues that they're having. So we need the contractors to tell us the issues that they're having, or what they would like to see. We don't see it from their perspective. And we've had some contractors come to us and tell us, this is what we need, this is how we need it to work. We need to be able to keep an eye on our subcontractors, and, you know, I, I get that. So maybe the first place to go is a, a brand-new survey.
Do we do, that's what I'm saying, do we do that before we, this?
I think that's.
Before this committee, and let's see what kind of answers we get back, because we can get that back pretty quick.
And if I can make a suggestion too, one thing that we may want to ask surveyors is, can, you tell us what jurisdiction that you do business in?
Right, that models in, like Raleigh or somewhere else, and we'll go, let's get them.
We're seeing a common thread that it's done by GovBuild or OpenGov or whatever, and, you know.
Winston-Salem or whatever, maybe Winston-Salem's good, you know, I've always heard.
They built it in-house.
I'd be interested in knowing who James talked to, the city of Warburg, the clockwork, and find out who they is.
Well, my buddy was Scott Jansen, and I can find out exactly what system that is. But Lillian, Randy had mentioned, I don't remember the name of it, some system that you said, didn't he say it would, it would actually talk to Bo and his people and work for everything?
I think it was one of the ones that the county was looking at already, one of the options, the GovBuild.
Okay.
That's the name.
Yeah, they did a, when we were kind of starting there, they did a, a quick demo with us, yeah.
So that was just one of those ones.
That is a very robust program, for sure.
More customizable than what we currently have, which was sort of like the in-the-box product.
They shake hands extensively with Laserfish. They're a sister company of Laserfish.
Perfect. Well, and they were also, their leadership of their company are former contractors. And government folks. So it was a good, it, it, you could tell they, they knew both sides of the equation.
So is that where we need to go? I mean, I get it, we got a lot of other things.
We got a lot of things to look at, but.
But I mean, is it, is it that far superior that it's a no-brainer?
But if it shows up on this survey on 10 times out of 10, then we'll know. Everybody in the state of North Carolina's moved to this company. There's something to that, you know what I mean?
I don't think that they had anybody in North Carolina.
If I may, regardless of who we go with, you know, optimal efficiency is the key. But even at, even at its best with the resources of today's technology, it's still going to always require a degree of human manipulation for the dynamics we deal with. But the key is, is we need the customer service given to us as it's expected for us to give to our public. That's what we need best from our software provider. And that's where we're, we're, the goal, what the aim, we're trying to.
And Bo, I think that's key. When we left the, the, the software company for, for 911 Center, one of the major reasons we left them is because they left us out in the cold when it come to, to customer service.
That's right.
And if you're telling me that Gov, OpenGov is, is kicking butt now because you told them we're going somewhere else, that doesn't give me faith in, in OpenGov.
I'm not warm and fuzzy yet.
That means, that means they're, they're, they're doing everything they can do to, to keep us, so they can drop us off again. And, and that, that, to me, these guys have got to be able to work efficiently. Otherwise, we're going to be fussing at them because things are not getting done. Things are going to back up. Citizens are going to complain. So we've got to have something that functions and works for everybody. And if there's something out there, I think we need to look at it.
You guys mind if we start with the survey first?
Committee in as well.
Mind if we start with the survey first?
Yeah, let's do the survey first. But, but another thing, I think, and to, and to give OpenGov a little bit of credit, I don't think we've stayed on them. Would that be a true statement?
I would say we've stayed on them. There's been a lot of attempts to get them to move and do things. It, when I got involved is when things started moving, because I started, I came in with a heavier hand. Yeah, I came in, my staff's not getting any response, everything else, and I'm now looking at it, and I'm saying, we're, we may not renew with you. Then you get their attention. But I think up until that point, you guys talked to them all the time. And Lillian's half, I think, did too.
Down the hole with them till I was blue, till it, till it, it took me professional courtesy explaining to them, now I got to go to my management and, and.
Right, but we didn't give them, did we give them anything in writing along the way that said, hey, you know, you guys are not performing?
Email communications, nothing in, in a, in a, nothing contractual or nothing that I'm aware of.
Because they've got it now, or y'all have got it figured out, where the contractors can see, I mean, that's been done, right?
There's a workaround.
Workaround, yeah.
It's still not optimal, but it, yes, there's, there's a way to do it.
Okay. All right, to shorten this up, yes, the committee, we need to do a committee, but first, let's do the survey.
And see what?
Let's get an email, and we need a good survey. Maybe you want to, to get one together and then send it out to us and see if we got anything. You know, I don't care if it's North Carolina or South Carolina.
Right.
Or Virginia. I want to know what programs they're using in other states or whatever that they see. Because we have some contractors that work multiple states, so.
And Lillian, I know, has a Survey Monkey account that we can do, and it, it'll do all the math for us, so, yeah.
But it needs to go out through the email blast of OpenGov to, to all the contractors.
And Lillian, I wanted to, to inform you that before you came in, the, the conversation was, you know, Bo, Bo's nice, not wanting to throw anybody under the bus, but his previous administration there, that ran the inspections, when they implemented this, they didn't have y'all in mind. So this needs to, you know, communicate very well between the two branches.
Thank you for saying that. And I was listening, sorry, we have a lot of people out today, so I was staying at the Health Department, but I kept hearing my name, so I ran over. But thank you for that acknowledgement. I can say, wholeheartedly, that we're working in lockstep. I think that the OpenGov team understands that Davidson County's working together closely now, and that's a change. As it's been mentioned, I did want to say, our IT person that we have at the Health Department has been working very closely with them to make sure that we can get what we need. I wanted to tell y'all one other thing that y'all have brought to my attention as a concern, that we're trying to figure out, and we still haven't gotten a solution for. Notice of violations. You know how we talk about that with the subject thing? We can't run a report on where the notice of violations are. We're not getting any information that comes out and says, you have a notice of violation, it's been this many days. So again, as I heard Commissioner Shores say, just a few moments ago, we are literally like ticking paper counting and having paper. So it's just a lot. And I'd like the customers to be able to see that too and access that easily.
So let me ask you this, can you not do that on a spreadsheet in your office, period?
Oh, yes, sir, we can. It's just not in the OpenGov system. So then you're running a spreadsheet, and we do have a spreadsheet. We have a shared spreadsheet. And Bo said something that I sort of say a lot, it's data in, data out, it's as good as what you put in.
This is after all, it's always been.
That's also a great problem right there. If OpenGov can crack that, since that's a data problem, back, what I call backend, not front-end facing the user, then that'll show me that they might can fix something. So I'm, I agree with Commissioner Shores that, that there's this.
Why haven't they fixed it before?
No, I got you. There's this battle between, why haven't they done it before, and we've gotten on their case? But I see where the chairman's going to of, we've got to be, not tread lightly, but you, you know, you go get this new company with this customizable. Customizable may mean two, three million buck system, I don't know. So we got to, we're, we're playing that game of, you know what I'm saying? But I understand your concern, but if they can fix that, just that. See, that's the great problem to land in their lap, because it's one thing. Just solve this one thing and show me you can do it, and then we got it.
I see it too with staff, though. If you've, you've got this, we've got this software that we're paying for that we're not really getting all the information that we need out of it for what we're paying. And then we're having staff members over here that have a job, they do this job, but now we're tasking them with this job to run this, this spreadsheet. And then they find out, well, my God, I'm spending all my time running this stupid spreadsheet for this software that we're paying for.
Let me rephrase, the spreadsheet should have been kept up with from the beginning. If you've got the departments, and they've got different inspections and that kind of thing, that's a natural.
Spreadsheets being used is so they can communicate within each other, because it's a shared.
Well, but no, a spreadsheet should have been used for the last 15, 20 years.
I mean, they might have a spreadsheet and have to pick up the phone and call and say, hey, this person's got a violation, but.
So but anyhow, data, tell me about the bad data. What is, I, I don't understand what the bad data is.
This has to do with as permits are getting entered in, and I don't like to use permit, that's a different world for environmental health. But as this gets entered in, what you can extract on the backside. There has to be something in the programming to be able to.
So you got to click, you got to click a button that says, or, or, or a circle that says it's this type permit, and that keeps all the other data out, and it recognizes that word or that type of permit?
Programming of their page in that website, when they go to pull a report, certain things may not be available to be pulled out as data to be reported. So that, that I believe is where the, the sticking point is on that.
I am not IT, but what you said, Chairman Yates, made a lot of sense to me. You have to have a box that you click on something with data, and then you can pull it out. The thing that we're banging our head up against the wall. The thing that we're banging our head up against the wall, um, with- with OpenGov is we want to make changes, but every time we make a change, it's not retroactive. So, it's only from that day forward. The old data's still there, but it won't pull that in. So, we're trying to make changes in a way that gets as much as we can at one time. So, then from that day forward, we know we're getting the data from the change and forward, and then we still would have to go paper pull the old ones to get that data out of.
And that's where they're saying, they're trying to go back to Lillian's point, before the change was made, to clean up what's there.
And that's where I get upset at them, because me, knowing my skill set, if they give me the flat file, I could give you the answer in the next ten minutes.
They're not gonna be able to do that, too. I mean, I know enough about software to know, they gotta have something that's-
No, I'm talking about the flat file. Like, if there's- if they've collected the data and it's in a file somewhere, I'm talking about the backend of the system, then it can be- it can be reported on, if it's there.
Well, again-
Again, that is an end-user skill set issue.
Right. So, I mean, I got it. Now, if Lillian went to him and said, I want a radio button right here that shows NOVs for this and that, and they go, okay, front-facing, she's looking at the system, that may be a program, uh, design issue. They may say, well, Lillian, that'll cost us to put that there, we might have to come out in the next version. But what they didn't say was, they- that data's collected, you know, it's already behind the scenes in the database. So, when I hear that, instead, you know, you guys want an answer for something, I'm sitting there going, okay, while they're waiting on version number two to fix it going forward, give me the flat file and I can answer their question.
That's right.
So, let me ask you this, so we shouldn't have to go back but about three or four or five months, right? I mean, your oldest NOV's prob- hopefully not older than five months.
Yes, sir. No, that- that is definitely a short one.
I don't really care about all the stuff.
That's right.
What- what the reports we're asking for is nothing older than four or five months, I would guess, you know, or three months.
Right.
I mean, you gotta start somewhere. I mean, it would cost you a fortune to go back and try to get things for the last-
Yeah.
Seventy-five years, you know?
That's right.
And could I ask them?
And that's why if y'all stay on their case now and get them solid going forward, at least we'll build that track, uh, history or whatever and be going- good going forward. It'll show us something that they can do and pull it off, but-
And Mr. Chairman, Casey and I, honest- honestly, haven't even really- we- I haven't- we haven't talked about what I'm getting ready to say, but we were very much on the same page on this. When I had my first meeting with them, just county- Assistant County Manager with their representative at OpenGov, back, uh, when I was out, actually, and working remote, I told them, of all these issues that you've gotten dropped on your lap, I said, there's two. If you can solve these two, this is- this will show a lot of promise. The first one is their reporting for over at Environmental Health. And I said, and the second one, the parent-child relationship.
Yeah.
If they can solve those two, that is a sign of that- I will start to get warm and fuzzy at that point a little bit more. Right now, to Commissioner Shores' point, just because I got on the phone and- and threatened to pull a contract from you, now you got- I got your attention, that doesn't give me the warm and fuzzies. I need to see ongoing progress to get that.
What does this cost us a year?
Uh, seventy-three thousand dollars a year.
I- I was, if I were to guess off the top of my head, I thought it was somewhere around seventy-eight, but if- if you're saying seventy-three-
Okay, seventy-five thousand.
Seventy-seven, yeah.
Uh, so, do we have a actual, uh, customer service agent that deals with us? Do we have a contact with OpenGov that-
There's- that would be Lauren.
Lauren is who we've been dealing with, right.
And- and she has, uh, as many as half a dozen for different areas of their software. She's sort of the spokesperson that gets us connected with the people that are in the specific areas of expertise of what their- their stuff does, and we correlate meetings as needed with those team members of hers.
So, Jason, are you involved, like, say, when Lillian, they trying to get the information, are- are you involved in that conversation to know, like, say, if we trying to get them to go back twenty years, that's not something we need to be doing, you know?
Yeah, there's been- we're- I'm- I'm involved in pretty much, I get updates from them when they have meetings, and then I have my own meeting with OpenGov.
Yeah, but I'm saying, are- are you clear how far they wanting to go back? Are you clear of that? Because, again, sometimes it's those- those details that people's got to dig into to get- to be able to get what you want.
Right. Well, I feel like we've been wanting to just get it fixed and have as far back as to- basically to- to get it fixed to where when we had the implementation. But if it can be, we give them a softer date, that's four or five months, as opposed to two years.
I mean, the report we're wanting now is the report of where it's at currently, okay?
Right.
I don't care what it was five years ago, or two years ago, or one year ago, I wanna know what it is now, you know? Is that not what we're looking for?
And that may, Jason, that may help out tremendously.
That would take some heartburn away from OpenGov.
You know, I mean, there- there's no need to making them jump through a hoop like that, when that's not what we need, you know?
May- may I just say, I'm sorry to interrupt, we are not asking them to go back, we're asking them to fix it from this point forward. My point in the go-back was just saying, our trepidation as we make changes in-house with our IT person, which they've given us the rights to do, we recognize that when we make that change, it will be just from that day forward. But OpenGov, the things we're asking them for now are to be able to, with one or two or maybe five clicks, how many IPCAs do we have open? How many IPCAs did Lillian do last week?
Now, I think with the software that I've bought over the years, this would be a pretty simple thing to do when I'm talking to my software people, you know? I just need a box for these different type, five different types of permits, and when we click on it, it's gonna track that- that type of permit. You know, so they- they have to- to fill in the circle of each type of permit they want, and it tracks that and the date from then on, you know? So, if I could talk with the software people and tell them-
That's the best way to talk to them, is- is from the end-user. What I- here's what I wanna see on the screen. You know, don't get into the widgets and the two-twenty-one gigawatt, this and that. Because I get- you get in lost in that language, you're- you're done. I want a button right here that clicks, that does this, and then stop. Don't- don't pressure them for nothing else, you know?
Lillian, I think you told us, but are you doing Zooms? I mean, are they looking at what you're telling them is not working? Is- is there-
Yes, we're doing Zooms, we're talking about it. The thing, I'll try to say this as quickly as possible. Environmental health is just complicated, and when we try to talk environmental health and they're talking IT, there's this loss in the sauce. What you just said, uh, Chairman Yates, is exactly what we're trying to say. We need a button, we need to know this, simple. Some of our permits get a little complicated, y'all know this. You have a house that was built fifty years ago, they get a repair, and then that's where it gets lost in the reporting, where it's trying to pull for one piece of property several things. And I believe that's where OpenGov is having the problem with getting us that one click to get what we need.
Like I say, they don't need to understand environmental health, you know? I mean, they don't need to understand that at all. The only thing they need to understand is what we need.
What we need on the- right.
You know?
But I- I see what you're saying, there might be one click to that report, and then five drop-down boxes of repairs. Unless they're generating a report that picks ninety percent of it up, but there's that one house you was looking for that was- should have been a subset in your data that had fifteen idiosyncratic pieces to it, that- that- that the algorithm in the background can't pull. It doesn't know. There's where I can see it getting a little- a little bit complex.
That's where they're asking us questions. They're like, how do you get- how come, excuse me, how come-
On a piece of paper, you can get away with it, but, you know.
Right, but they're like, why does this- why does this one have an IPCA from a private company? And why is this one an IPCA that they applied from the Health Department? What's the difference? How do we tell the computer to weed out the difference so that we can get that report back to you? Sometimes people put in something and there's some changes. Every time we think we have a simple solution, they try to run a report. In fact, they demonstrated for us, they ran the reports that we were asking for. I think it was three or four different ways on that Zoom meeting, and they had three or four different numbers every time. And they said, none of these are right, and let's talk about why. And it's the background that Casey's talking about with the numbers and the codes that you have to put in, when we simply asked, how many of these are open and need a permit? They ran it using the different data points from the boxes, three or four different ways, and had three or four different numbers. And I- we were like, this is a problem, we have to be able to fix this. That's when they started asking questions about what the differences are and why they got three or four different reports and numbers.
And the last piece, I'll say, this is where your point about spreadsheet is important. If you have the spreadsheet, you match that to the number and say, no, my number's thirteen, why is it pulling twenty-one?
That's right.
But we don't have the spreadsheet piece necessarily, so we can't say thirteen is our right answer. So, if they pull twenty-one one time, and then the next answer's thirty-seven, you're going, I don't know which one's right answer.
Yeah, we should always have the correct information.
We always got thirteen, and we can say, no, till you hit thirteen, your data's not pulling the correct answer.
Unless you got something to verify.
And that gets back to Bo's point about the testing. You do need to test these things, you know, rather vigorously before you turn them loose, because the public don't know any better or not. The reports is what suffer. The public necessarily don't see it, because contractor goes in, pays the bill, gets the permit, and goes. That usually works okay. It's the reports that suffer. It's when you guys want an answer on something, and we go, wait a minute, this number ain't matching right. This ain't the right answer.
Oh, and I know Bo's even had that, some reporting issues there where they're saying, well, no, this is what we've- we've done in permits and in dollars. And I'm going, no, I can tell you how much we've taken in in dollars in permits. It's called the revenue line and the budget.
That's right. So, so let me ask you this, can I go to OpenGov and buy a septic permit? Because I go to OpenGov, I just got a building permit the other day. It's pretty easy, I- I felt like, but I had staff to help me, but-
You can apply for a septic permit, a septic repair, you can put in a septic complaint for your neighbor, you can do all those things.
On- on OpenGov, right?
On the website, yes, sir.
Not on the website, on OpenGov.
Oh, on-
Well, it's- it- it is web-based.
It's kinda tied to the thing, yeah.
Side to get to it, but yeah.
But I'm saying, can I go to OpenGov-
Mm-hmm.
And get a permit? I mean, it's not- not that it feeds me off over to the Health Department, is it part of OpenGov's?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Lillian, but from my understanding, you would go on, and you would apply, and you go through an application process through OpenGov that interacts with the Health Department and gets you to the do's and don'ts to be able to proceed forward.
So, it's integrated with our website?
Yeah, well, OpenGov is- it's a web-based program.
I- I get that, but I'm just saying, so, but what I'm saying is it part of the OpenGov program that I- I start my permit and buy it all the way through to get me a septic permit, because I'm fixing to get one, and I wanna know if I can do it solely on OpenGov.
Yes, sir.
Or if it's gonna feed me through and carry me to a link to the county website to get a permit.
My understanding, when you go in, just like you would for a building permit, and you say, I need a septic permit, it will prompt you on the OpenGov site that you probably access through the county or the Health Department site to start your septic process. And it'll ask, how many bedrooms, basement, pool, all these things, what type of system, all that stuff. Those are our internal input forms on what you need. Then what will happen is we'll get a notification that we have an application for a septic permit, and we will put it in the queue with the ones that we have. And then we'll go on a se- a spreadsheet, we have a spreadsheet, and then it gets assigned to staff.
You won't know this a difference.
I bet you it leads me- I bet you it leads me to y'all's, uh, I bet you that's what it does. Instead of it being a- a part, and there's a reason I'm asking this, okay? It was all under one OpenGov program. I bet it's sending you to another link to the county part to do the permit.
I think those are the forms from- that you guys built that come from OpenGov that are on the webpage, right? So, when you click that, you're in the form, that form's feeding into the database of OpenGov.
It's a- it- it is, when you go to, you know, on the website, you go to central permitting to- and click on the OpenGov portal, it gives you three- three options here. One is central permitting, which would be you pull from Bo. The next one's environmental health.
Those data points, it's like Commissioner Elliott said, for the energy, it's feeding. It's feeding the backend data that's going into the system, so it's- it's collecting it all when you put it in.
But anyhow, I'll get a- I- I'll do a permit for long, and I'll see how it sends me or what I think it's doing, you know? But anyhow, we getting way deep in the-
I- I think I understand what you were saying, is if- if I pull my building permit and I- or I start this, can I go ahead while I'm in here and do that as well? And do it all and not have to go out and go back in?
Yeah. Well, now, what I was actually wondering, if it's actually doing it through OpenGov or if it's doing it through-
Right, it's touching it, right. And it is, because that's where the forms got generated, the front-end.
Yeah, because all the forms are built in OpenGov, yeah.
So, if there's the right buttons there, it should track it. Not a whole lot of issues. But anyhow, yes, let's do a committee, but yes, let's get this survey out soon. If you will send it to the board, maybe the board, whoever does the survey, will see and tailor the questions to maybe what the contractors may want, uh, or see what their need is, and then soon as we get that information back-
We'll come back and see.
And maybe we'll ask them if they'd be interested in serving on a committee. You can ask some in the service.
That's another good question.
That'd be great. That's a great idea.
Willing to be part of a committee.
Okay. All right, long enough on that one, so thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
Yep. Uh, landfill requests, waste disposal fees, uh-
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Um, you know, we've done this, I think, two years in a row. I know we did last year, the, uh, the waiving of the fees at the landfill. This is just an item to propose doing that again for the week of August tenth to the sixteenth.
We have any problems before?
Not that I'm aware of. Stephen's here, in case y'all need to ask any questions. Charlie just wanted it set for, I believe, start on a Saturday, wasn't it, Stephen? And end on the, like, Friday of the following week, just to have some time. But remember, last year, we did it in July, so we're getting a little bit of a later start, but I don't think it's gonna be any issue.
Uh, Stephen, what's your thoughts, buddy? All good? It was a, um-
We've had some people ask about it, um-
I guess the question would be, um, what problems?
Right.
What's the problem?
Yeah, I think it was all- all good. I mean, from what I heard, uh, it was all good, right, Stephen?
Yes, everything went very well.
Uh, anything that y'all would want changed?
Just to keep, uh, trial and error. I mean, we're trying to stay fully staffed enough to keep people going through. We just asked that you close, we close thirty minutes earlier, try to keep to four o'clock, try- so we didn't get as much overtime.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's what I was gonna add, because I knew Charlie had said something to me about that, closing thirty minutes early.
Thirty minutes.
Um, but I tell you, I hate to close thirty minutes early to the commercial traffic. You know, now, if you wanted to turn the residential part over or whatever and cut them off at a certain time on the scale, does that make sense? Because your commercial people, they're there to make-
That's right.
They got a business to run, you know, so they got hours. So, would that work, Stephen?
That would work.
So, that, I guess, the scale could turn, um, whatever, the- the private-
So, the residential could close thirty minutes early and- and the commercial would stay open till closing?
Yeah, the residential customers, in other words, the- the commercial customers could keep running on till-
Till four o'clock, normal hours.
Yeah, with that.
They just put that time on there, so they figure that out.
To what- to what time now, I thought? Five?
No, it's four o'clock. The scale's closed at four.
Oh, four, okay.
On the commercial side.
And here's the brochure that they're gonna put out. And it's got the hour, seven-thirty to three-thirty on that brochure.
It's got three-thirty?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah, that's good, so the brochure. But again, make sure the staff knows the commercial trucks can run on to them.
Perfect.
That's gonna be on our website and everything?
That needs to be stated as well, not just the residential.
I'll have Mandy put this on the, um, as one of our highlights, one of our news reels that's on the front page. Okay.
And Jason can pump it to the Facebook page, too.
Yeah, I'll put it on Facebook.
Because a lot of- now more people look at that than they do pretty much anything else.
So, we have a motion?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion that, uh, that we go forward with the second. I got you, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Thanks, Steve.
I'm glad somebody knows where I'm going. Yeah, we gotta roll on. Commissioner Watford, uh, needs to leave early. She's got grandbaby day today, so we wanna make sure, uh, she gets out of here for that. Approval of bid award Liberty Drive school system?
We got the bids for the sinkhole over there at Thomasville Primary available for you guys, um, so Dwayne's got them available. I think the low bid, the responsive- responsible bidders are the ones we're looking at, right?
Yes, sir.
It's right down there. I can see the bids there, Debbie. I hadn't seen the bids yet, so do you-
That's on your attachment, right, Dwayne?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Two hundred and seven thousand, five hundred dollars, and I'm asking for a ten percent contingency to go along with that. So, that total will be two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars.
Remember, we had Josh and, uh, them shoot this thing and figure out the points at which we had some issues, so I think we've narrowed it in.
Yeah, who was low? Mid-state, is that what it is?
Or north state.
North state.
North state water and sewer?
Yes, sir. Uh, out of Winston-Salem.
What's their estimated time of completion?
As soon as I get contracts and, uh, insurance, ma'am. They're ready to start.
So, they- because they wanna get it before next school year.
Yeah, before school starts in August, yes, ma'am.
So, we're going with this one? Yeah. That was pretty close bidding, huh?
Yeah, it was.
Very close.
Very close.
Yeah, especially from first to second. Okay, can I have a motion to approve, uh-
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? That motion carries. Thank you, Dwayne.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, item nine F, appointment to the planning board and board of adjustment. And I was wanting to say something here. I don't know about you guys, but Debbie just sent me an email on this, I guess, yesterday, and maybe you'd-
Day before.
Day before, yeah.
But it was something that had been sent out back in May, and I just wanted you to see it again, because-
But it's kind of current, it snuck up on me, and I don't know what you guys think, but I'd like a little time to look over this and- and see if we got some people, uh, that we can think of. And I see we have some candidates here that's applied, but we-
And also, just to- just to update you, the agenda item says, one planning board member and one planning board alternate, and then one board of adjustment alternate. Ron Russell has indicated that he wants to come off as an alternate, so it's gonna be two alternates for the board of adjustment.
That's- so, we need two?
We'll- we'll need two board of adjustment members. They will be, uh, uh, alternates, and we need to replace Mr. Wes Kimbrel, who stepped down as a full-time voting member and we need- on the planning board, and we need another alternate for the planning board.
So, two board of adjustment and alternates.
We're gonna be selecting four people, right?
Four people on this list, or anyone else that would apply.
Yes.
And an alternate for- And an alternate for the planning.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
And they might, they had some recommendations as, as...
Well, Scott indicated, uh, in the email, what we felt as staff level, based on their skill sets, with, with, where they would be, uh, that they could apply those, uh, most efficiently. With the board of adjustment, it's a quasi-judicial, uh, action, which you're reviewing evidence, and that, that takes a little bit of a different mindset than, than the planning board, where you're, you're, you need to be more familiar with development procedures and that type of thing.
I know Mr. Smith's an NC State engineer, so he's pretty, pretty sharp in the big...
Yeah, I've seen several of them on there.
Yeah, a lot of them, so wherever y'all...
But again, if, if you don't mind, if we can put this off to the next meeting, cause they may be some, some people that, that we...
On the twelfth?
That's more.
We, we want the board to be comfortable with it, that's fine with us, yes, sir.
You all live here seven months?
No.
That, that, here, there, and everywhere else.
So, uh, yeah, that's what we'll do, we'll move that one to, and I, I'll try to look around, and y'all look around, see if y'all can think of some, some good folks and get them to apply to, so, okay.
I'm down with y'all.
Um, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, discussion, uh, on the formation of America Two Fifty Committee?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, uh, Thomas, come on up here for just one second, in case I need you for something. Um, Thomas came to me with this grant opportunity for Miss America Two Fifty, North Carolina. This is coming out of Cultural Resources, and I'm assuming some of this may even be federal dollars, where they're hea, they're able, able to provide funds for, um, scholarly research, tourism projects, and educational outreach. This went out to apparently all managers, city managers and county managers, cause Michael Branner in Thomasville asked me about it, and said, "We'd like to, we'd like to be on any committee that would be mentioned." Well, Thomas and I had already talked about it before that, long before that, and I didn't think we'd even get the grant, so we went ahead and applied for it and received word that we got ten thousand dollars through the grant. No match amongst like seven other counties that got, everybody got ten thousand dollars. The tricky is, we gotta form a committee to finalize the deal and get the MOU and take that, and do our part, and there's a, but then there's a second track to this. So rather than Thomasville needing to be involved in this, there's a, what they call a community programs track, that they can apply for, for a grant fund separately, they could go in with somebody like, with Pace, for example, out of Thomasville. So I don't know that there needs to be this broad committee of, you know, municipalities and us. Thomas and I thought, and if it's amenable to the board, is we have a committee just made of two Parks and Rec board members and two River Park board members, uh, to satisfy our requirement here, and they can talk about this project. He wanted to weigh finding signs down at the river, uh, for the grant, so I don't wanna make this too complex, other than just set up a basic committee to get our ten, and then we've notified Thomasville, if you'd like to continue on with the grant process, cause the, the new grant process is in August, and it is gonna have local match requirements, but you can, they can do that on their own, does that make sense? They don't need us for that, and we could always expand our committee of the four people later if we wanted to continue to get involved in these grants, if that makes sense.
Parks and Rec took from the Yakima River Park?
Yes, and I, did you have members already identified?
Yeah, well, I talked to Randy Holmes and Lee Brooke from Parks and Rec Board, and from Yakima River Park, I was gonna pull, uh, Paul Mitchell and Guy Cornet.
Amen.
To be able to do that, because as which y'all know, most of y'all have sat on the boards.
That's right.
I'm gonna bring everything back to the Yakima River Park Committee and the Parks and Rec Board Committee before we implement anything anyway, so that way at least they would have the input, they'd have the say, and we go through everything, what we're gonna do with the grant, and then bring it forward to the committees before we ever move forward with it anyway.
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that we, uh, form the committee as Thomas has stated.
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Good job.
Fantastic.
Alright, designation of voting delegate, uh, annual conference, um...
You going James?
I am.
Then I would, uh, nominate James to be the voting delegate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There you go. And legislative goals is gonna be postponed, right? And you may wanna put that one on there, uh, one of the goals is, and I'm sure it ain't gonna rank very high, of maybe, uh, talking to our legislator, no, we'll talk to our legislators on that one, on a personal level, yep.
Are you going to close that, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
After a short break?
Alright, favor, aye?
Thank you.
I'll see you at that.
Okay, thank you.
Um...
Tom was, I got to be somewhere eleven, I got to sit in. Alabama, Alabama, and then Texas. Let's go.[182.12]